Good evening. I call to order the January 6, 2021 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic device. Mr. Messer, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
President.
Mrs. Bowers? Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Mr. Morosky did say he would be here. Sorry. And I'm here.
President Jones.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I should have waited until you were done. Sorry. Okay.
No worries, no worries.
I'm going to ask Mr. Lindy, for whatever reason, do you have your camera on? We can't see you.
President Jones, I don't, but I'll be able to have it on in about two minutes.
I got you. Okay. All righty. Members of the public who wish to speak during hearing of the public must request to do so during the first 10 minutes after the start of the meeting. To speak will need to send a request. Whoa. You will need to... What happened? I'm sorry. You will need to send a request by clicking the chat button, submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, and your contact information, only if you want a direct response to any questions that you might have. In keeping with the board's standard practice for hearing the public, you must click the camera icon when you are recognized to speak. Individuals who request to be heard after the first 10 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak during this meeting. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, December 16, 2020, and the business meeting, December 16, 2020.
Done.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any opposed? All in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved as presented. Okay. Ms. Bolton, please present the December 17 Health and Safety Committee meeting report.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, happy to do so. We had a very conversational meeting about some very important and weighty subjects, and most particularly want to draw attention, as you all receive these minutes, regarding the section dealing with collaboration to learn faster. We were fortunate to have Dr. Khan, who is Associate Chair of the Community Health at UC Department of Pediatrics, visit with us and answer a number of questions. Frankly, the questioning was really led by Member Lindy regarding several things, most particularly about what are the needed analytics and what are the current studies, or can we participate in any, to help figure out how we might be able to return in person in a safe manner now that some of the suggested protocols might be changing over the next couple of months, and also the whole vaccination piece as well. And Dr. Khan spent a number of minutes with us. I think it went well into about 30-some minutes of the meeting, and he talked about a number of programs and measurements and studies that are being conducted within our own state, that one of the leading districts involved with that is Mason District. Ohio State is also involved, and so we would be following and looking at those sorts of results about what kinds of protocols might be needed, what kind of testing, what could we do to somehow get back to school and be prepared, not only for next year, but also prepared for even this spring. And so I would direct your attention to those couple of pages particularly that are in the minutes about that conversation. Another issue is that I think Mr. Lindy had brought to the possibility for the passing out of certain PPE equipment, and our Chief Strategic Officer, Derek Trimble Oliver, spoke about that and the need for it and how that could possibly be distributed. The Director of our Transportation Department, Mr. Johnson, brought information to the Safety Committee specifically about safety on our school buses, positive school culture and behavior, and we talked at length about that. And I think in your minutes, you will see a number of parts, if you will, of how some of the practices that we have within our buildings are also being distributed and enacted and utilized and implemented on our buses as well. We talked again about bus monitoring and talked about, of course, the COVID protocols regarding busing, and that the decisions that we all need to make, need to be made, if you will, based upon the data that we've got, so that we can make the best possible adjustments. I would also direct your attention to something that our Communications Officer brought to us, which is emergency communication possibility, perhaps an additional or different vendor. There might be an RFP. And I know we spoke at the committee meeting to see what we already have, and then also what might be the procedures if we were to reach beyond what we have, or if there's some group, perhaps that vendor or another, that would be offering some other services that we may not have. Also, under Other Business, we did talk, if you will, as well, about the particular to the issue regarding Walnut Hills and return to in-person and what that might take, even though we are so limited by facilities. The Superintendent briefed us, too, on a number of community conversations that she's had regarding the challenges being faced by so many of our families regarding being able to meet the demands of remote and not having in-person, and the fact that this is not only a health issue, but it has become a financial and social issue for our families. And they deeply want to be in school, but many of our families are struggling, and their children have become part of the economic plan for their families. So lots of things to be concerned about regarding health and safety, and on a number of perhaps the most prioritized issues, such as transportation and return to school, and certain information from experts that might help us make the right decisions. I submit and hope for approval.
Okay. Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Lindy, please unmute.
Thanks, President Jones. Thanks, Member Bolton, too, for the great summary. I just wanted to add, I thought one thing I learned in the meeting that was encouraging was that there are studies going on now about the difference between three feet and six feet, when it has to do with spread of COVID within schools, and that Dr. Khan was cautiously optimistic that there would be some early analysis of those results, really from schools in Ohio, very soon. And so I'm hoping that as we think about how to get kids back safely, I'm cautiously optimistic that that can be a part of the thinking that we do.
Thank you.
If I might, Madam President, I think that's a good add. I also think it was very kind of transparent in a moment of a couple of moments of particular honesty about all the non-CDC stuff, for example, the studies in Ohio and what have you. All of these things will require some agencies, or some experts, or some organizations to own it and advise that it happen, that it would be difficult for CPS to stand alone or to go beyond the experts. But it's, to Mr. Lindy's point, it's wonderful that we have sort of a homegrown approach to this regarding three feet and six feet, and also the change now about the quarantine days, perhaps. And again, we mentioned the importance of getting our teachers vaccinated as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? All righty. Ms. Bolton, you also have the next report from Budget, Finance, and Growth.
Yes, I do. And this is our annual look see at vendor contracts that are over 200,000, so that took up much of the end of the meeting. At the very, very end of it, it was strictly for information only, and I appreciate all the administrative efforts to brief us and prepare us regarding a review. And the minutes include an extensive chart that was followed regarding those contracts. And I would urge members of the board to review that chart that is attached. We also had our normal, but basically submitted rather than discussed, and this material will also appear in the Audit Committee minutes as well, and that's the Treasurer's Financial Update, which deals with revenue and expenditures. We're very familiar with these charts, the cash balance and encumbrances, state and federal grants, and then also the Tuition Assistance Summary from the CPS preschool CPSS and preschool promise expansion efforts. Had a little bit of a talk about the timeline for the COPS, which are the... It's not police, but it's called Certificates of Participation, and what's our date regarding spend down. And then a report, too, from both Senator Kearney and Mr. Glover regarding the most critical legislative issues, and more particularly what might or might not happen, or might probably not happen regarding lame duck. Those things are included in writing for us all. The Treasurer then presented the initial draft of a new budget proposal, excuse me, development proposal, in a number of phases, and I would direct your attention to that. It starts earlier. The board's more in the upfront of that effort, and I would also suggest there are more opportunities for the community to participate. And there's some really interesting kind of approaches to actually get us to kind of a new think, and, you know, the next CPS. You might want to look at the phases as they are listed out for us. And we'll be able to, I hope, reflect on this proposal on January 16 at our work session slash retreat. Then the real quick information about the tax budget hearing, which is scheduled for this month. And then also, we had a good end of the year, calendar year, anyway, to the next calendar year, a presentation by our outstanding Director of Internal Audit, and it outlines where the priorities are. And I would again suggest a look-see at that, and there's additional information, a part of the audit meeting as well. I would also direct your attention that we had a report from Vera Brooks regarding the Workforce Development Council budget. Now, that is the effort as part of the preschool promise expansion piece to make it possible for us to develop a pipeline and increase professional development in preparation for our preschool folks that are both private providers and also within CPS. And then we had the very extensive contract review, and we were glad to also have, as guests, members of the School Board School group, and they participated and watched some of the meeting. And then more particularly, we had a debrief with several of them, and appreciate their interest in participation and support of our district. Submit and hope for approval.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about this report? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Ms. Bolton, you got all three tonight, so.
Well, I did, and unfortunately, Mrs. Bates called me about something else. And so I gave that back to her because she was there for the beginning. I got in there midway, so it's up Mrs. Bates. I should have told you that. I'm sorry.
Go for it, Ms. Bates.
Okay. During the Audit Committee meeting, Lauren Roberts, our Director of Internal Audit, gave the status of ongoing district audits and also external audits. It's a pretty extensive list, and you can review those. You have those in writing before you. She also gave an update, or not, our Treasurer gave an update on financials of the district, which you're all very familiar with, same information that we have been receiving. But what was very interesting, very interesting conversation during the meeting was that the members of the Audit Committee, even though they are professionals in the field of finance and budget and accounting, are not totally familiar with school budgeting and school finance, which is certainly not uncommon. I always say there are about 20 people in the state of Ohio that understand school finance. I kind of say that tongue-in-cheek, and it is very complicated and very different. But they want to be able to understand our financials more closely and diligently so that they, as professionals, can attest to our financials. So that is one of the goals of the Treasurer for this group in 2021, to be able to present the financials in a way, in an educational way, and in a format that's understandable to our group so that they can attest to the veracity of our financials and assist us in a closer advisory capacity. So I present these minutes as written for acceptance.
Okay. Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about the audit report? Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Done.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lindy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve carries. All righty. So we're at presentations. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce our first presenter.
Absolutely. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm so excited welcoming everyone to 2021, and we want to start off this new year with a presentation aligned to one of our board goals, student-centered decision-making. So our Deputy Superintendent Tiana Amat and Vera Brooks will be providing a presentation on early childhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year. We could pull up that presentation, and we'll get started. Next slide, please. It's exciting to start the new year off with an update of our strategic plan, and just to remind the community of our five goals. One is around student-centered decision-making. Two, health and safety. Three, community engagement and influence. Four, optimize capabilities. And five, growth. And in today's presentation, we will specifically give you an update on early childhood education, which falls under number one, student-centered decision-making, and five, growth. Next slide, please. Part of the presentation, you will hear from a team of folks, because it takes a team to achieve all that we have done in the to support the strategic plan, under growth, enrollment, and the number of seats that we've added in preschool. Next slide, please. And then next, student-centered decision-making. So there are four key areas that you will hear about today. One around academic performance, community partnerships, improved systems to enroll preschool students, and a recruitment plan. It is an honor to introduce our fearless leader of early childhood, Ms. Vera Brooks. Will start us off. Next slide, please.
Good answer. Thank you, Deputy Amat, for your comments and for your leadership. It is an honor for our department to be a part of the four-by-four, where our focus with this map has changed into a more teaching and learning while maintaining our compliance and step-up to quality ratings. This map represents more than just seats and locations now. Expansion has grown for us over these last several months with the shift in thinking. We have expanded our instructional program, which you will learn about tonight, which is impacting our students' academic growth, along with we have expanded our reach into being in career and college pathway with our CDA program under Michael Turner to prepare high school students for the world of work once they have graduated. I'm about to introduce to you a team of individuals that I'm very honored to work with, for they are very dedicated, but many times they are behind the scenes. So you may have heard their name, but tonight you will see their faces. Or they are the individuals who are the gears that make everything work. They've been presented this past year with many challenges and barriers, and I am so proud of them because they're going to share with you tonight how we have overcome those barriers to ensure that our youngest learners are receiving a high-quality education and our families are receiving services that are needed for all of us in our city to be successful. So with that, my greatest honor is to first introduce to you our Health and Nutrition Coordinator, who joined us about two years ago, who collaborates closely with many Cincinnati Public School Departments and partnerships, Ms. Kelsey Abel. Next slide, please.
Hello. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Next slide. Prior to welcoming our youngest learners back to in-person learning, we had to prepare our classrooms for safety. Each classroom size was determined by classroom square footage. Using classroom square footage as our guide allowed us to maintain the recommended six feet of social distancing at all times. Plastic dividers, touchless thermometers, electrostatic sprayers, and shields and masks were supplied to each classroom for teacher and student safety. We also had to update some of our policies and procedures in order for everyone to remain safe during the pandemic. We collaborated with school sites and principals for effective arrival and dismissal. We collaborated with student dining services for safe eating in our classrooms, and we also collaborated with the Cincinnati Health Department and Cincinnati Children's Hospital for other safety procedures and best practices for a safe return to learning. When pivoting to a five-day virtual learning schedule, we implemented additional supports to our youngest learners and their families. Our teachers are virtually practicing healthy habits such as mask-wearing, handwashing, tooth brushing, healthy eating, and the importance of movement with our Mission to Move program. Our diagnostic team has been out completing virtual screenings and needed evaluations, and our ECE social workers are virtually providing emotional supports and strategies to our teachers and our students. Next slide. It is my pleasure to introduce Maggie Neighbors, Service Coordinator, and Cindy Reed, our Service Hub Coordinator, to talk about recruitment and registration.
Next slide, please. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you today. We began our KDD on growth three years ago with the goal to expand access and opportunities to all preschool-aged children that reside within the CPS boundaries. Due to the pandemic, we made changes in our practices and processes to safely connect with families. Next slide, please. Based on six-foot social distancing, we had to adjust the number of seats available in our classrooms. We updated our numbers today, and as of today, early childhood has a total of 1,386 students enrolled or have seats reserved for the current school year. Those would be the magnet students that withdrew. With the board decision, 82 magnet students that withdrew now have reserved seats for the 21-22 school year. With our current enrollment, students with reserved seats and students that have withdrawn, we've touched the lives of over 1,550 preschoolers this year so far. We've provided preschool services for 79 students experiencing homelessness, 70 of which are currently enrolled. Early childhood staff have worked diligently to enroll students in classrooms while supporting families through these difficult times. Next slide, please. Families continue to reach out to the hubs wanting to enroll. The pandemic has not stopped us from enrolling, we just do it a little differently. We take enrollments over the phone, online, or in-person. Our hubs see parents primarily by appointment with an occasional walk-in, but always keep it in mind, everybody's safety is our priority. We want parents to know that we are available. Our goal is to eliminate all obstacles to enrollment. Hubs provide services beyond enrollment to our families. They provide social service supports, information, referrals, and parent education. We have bilingual Assistant School Community Coordinators on staff, and as well as we have phone interpreter services available for families that need language support through registrations. Even with the pandemic, our Assistant School Community Coordinators meet with families on a weekly basis to share information and provide follow-up. They monitor the health and wellness of our preschoolers and families, sharing resources to address each family's specific health and social service needs. They will soon begin meeting with each preschool family to discuss next year's enrollment, whether that's a returning to preschool or transitioning to kindergarten. Thank you for the opportunity to share what we do, and I would like to introduce our managers, Della Goodwin Thiburn, she's unavailable to meet with us today, Angie McDonald, and our lead teachers, Glenn Calhoun and Kimberly Trailerlow, to discuss teacher and student support.
Thank you, Maggie. Next slide, please. It's a pleasure to be here, everyone. Next slide, please. Reflecting on where we were last spring, we knew we needed to get everyone on the same page and be certain that staff and students had access to the necessary materials for teaching and learning to be successful, no matter what the setting. When schools closed in March, not all classrooms were using Schoology. There was a lack of comfort with Google, and not all students had access to technology and the necessary learning materials needed to support learning at home. Immediately, the ECE Department collaborated internally with IT to offer additional training on both Google and Schoology for staff and families. We provided additional professional development in the content areas of math, language arts, and science. While those professional development opportunities were occurring, we also began to organize a group of teachers to help think through what would make learning successful in the fall for both teachers and students, recognizing we needed to prepare for all possibilities. Additionally, we knew we would need to spend time thinking through what staff supports would look like, as well as maintaining our quality and compliance requirements with Head Start, the Ohio Department of Education, and Step Up to Quality. Through strong internal and external relationships with one another and our community partners and funders, we are successfully navigating a school year like no other. Next, Kimberly Trailerlow will share information about our work to make at-home learning successful for teachers, students, and families.
Thanks, Angie. Hi. My name is Kimberly Trailerlow. Thank you, board members, for your time today. The pandemic has definitely affected our youngest learners. How in the world would we be able to reach our preschoolers? Everyone knows that keeping a three-year-old can be challenging online. Teachers were able to engage students Teachers were able to engage students through our Google meetings. In a remote learning environment, teachers need to be able to continue to teach. Preschool teachers use Teaching Strategies Creative Curriculum or Language and Literacy, called the Cloud. The Cloud allows teachers to present literature online and learning activities. And I bet you want to know, well, how did we keep these families engaged? Well, teachers engage families using a platform called Ready Rosie. Ready Rosie gives families the opportunity to engage in learning together. This program also promotes language and literacy, listening and speaking skills, phonological awareness, vocabulary, and reading comprehension. Teachers can send out videos and activities to engage their families through play. After participating in these activities, families can give back, give feedback, and send videos of how their students responded to the activities. Therefore, both teacher and families can collaborate in the learning process. To-go bags. Next slide, please. One more. In the spring of 2020, our team knew that we needed to hit the ground running. So this, in the summer, a team of teachers got together to plan our to-go bags. These bags were sent home during remote learning. The bags support math and reading goals set by our school district. We know that preschool is the foundation for a smooth transition to school-age learning. So the bags contain hands-on materials for students to use with their teachers online. Items like letters, numbers, Play-Doh, books, and other materials are included in the bags. Parents and teachers were so appreciative to receive these materials. Our goal was to help everyone work together in this remote learning home environment. We would like to thank Brands to Computers for their generous donation. We would also like to thank Lakeshore Learning for their materials and both packing and unpacking during distribution. And we would also like to thank Cincinnati Public Schools Transportation vendors for their generous donation as well. And now my partner, Glenn Calhoun.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next slide, please. So we've been able to collaborate with Community Action Agency, and we are piloting an innovative way to support our teachers as they strive to improve while still meeting the necessary compliance obligations we have in early childhood. We use an observation tool called the Classroom Assessment Scoring System, known as the CLASS, and this tool evaluates classroom emotional support, organization, and instructional support. Historically, class observations are conducted in the fall and the spring of each year. Through this pilot, we've been able to complete the fall observation cycle, meet with each teacher for a feedback and goal-setting session. We're also using this aggregated data for, to guide our professional development and other supports as we move forward in the spring. But the cool part of this pilot is rather than doing the second observation cycle in the spring, we're able to use that time for coaching, supporting teachers to meet the goal that we've worked on. And I think this really offers teachers a, a safe way to get feedback and to reflect on their own teaching while still getting the supports they need to improve their practice. With that, we will go back to Angie McDonald.
Thanks, Glenn. Next slide, please. I'll be talking about the Early Learning Assessment, or ELA. This is the state-required assessment for preschool. It's used to assess the skills, knowledge, and behaviors of preschool-aged children to support teachers in determining strengths, area of need, and readiness for kindergarten. Scores range from A through D and 1 through 5. Typically, we would see scores from most three-year-olds in the range of 1 to 2, and scores from four-year-olds in the 2 to 4 range. Our goal is for four-year-olds who leave CPS preschool onto kindergarten to score a 4 in all areas to demonstrate kindergarten readiness. Scores of A through D recognize that preschool children are at varying levels of development when they come to us and may not yet have experience with certain skills. Tonight, we'll be reporting on our numeric scores for students. The ELA is an ongoing assessment with data collected continuously throughout the year. The expectation from the state is that the ELA scores will be reported during both fall and spring. During the 2019-2020 school year, ELA data was only reported in the fall due to the pandemic. And over the next few slides, I will share information that compares our fall of 2019 data to the fall of 2020. Next slide, please. This data looks at a student's skills, knowledge, and behaviors, and phonological awareness. One specific skill teachers are trying to determine is related to rhyming. Can a student recognize rhyming words and eventually create rhyming words on their own? Looking at this data, we noticed that we had about 56% of our students score in the 1 to 2 range in the fall of 2019, and in the fall of 2020, we had about 53% of our students in that same range. We also noticed that there was a slightly higher percentage of students who were able to score in the Level 3 range this school year. One note of success, there were 14% of our students who scored at Level 5 in fall of 2020, which means they are more than kindergarten-ready in this area. Another interesting item that I would like to bring to your attention, in 2019, teachers were able to assign a numeric score to 236 students. In 2020, 444 students were able to receive a numeric score. The exciting thing about this piece of data is that we now have more students who are within the developmental range of a typical preschooler. We believe that there are a few, a few reasons for this success. First, teachers have received additional training around the ELA, their indicators, and have a better understanding of how to score and what to look for to determine success. Also, we implemented a new phonological awareness program called Hegarty in 2018 that specifically supports these skills. So the combination of intentional professional development and additional curricular support has seen much success. Next slide, please. This data looks at the area assessed communication. Demonstrated skills include students being able to express their basic needs and wants. More advanced skills that teachers are looking for are the ability of students to hold a detailed conversation with multiple back-and-forth exchanges. Looking at the fall of 2019 and fall of 2020, the data is consistent, noting a small growth in students scoring at a Level 5 in 2020. This is a new dataset that Early Childhood will be studying throughout the remainder of this school year so that we can determine how to support student growth related to this indicator next year. Next slide, please. This next chart shares data specifically for performance in vocabulary. The skills assessed in this category include the ability for a student to use new, meaningful words in conversations as a beginning skill, with a more advanced skill of determining the meaning of new words by the use of context clues, concrete objects, and supports from adults. In this area, we did note a decline in score from fall of 2019 to fall of 2020. As a percentage, more students did receive a numeric score of 1 or 2 in the fall of 2020, and yet a smaller percentage were able to achieve that mid-score of 3. We believe that this is due to several factors. First, supporting our ELL students during distance learning has been challenging. We have a plan for additional professional development for staff to provide support in this area specifically, starting Monday. In addition, distance learning for preschool has never been done before, and we're having to learn how to navigate the skill of conversation with our youngest learners while on Google. Through our department observations discussed by Glenn earlier, discussions have been had with teachers, and additional coaching will be provided around the topping, topic of asking students more open-ended questions, especially in the virtual setting. Although challenging, we know the importance of encouraging language and communication to support strong readers in kindergarten and beyond. Next slide, please. Another new data point for Early Childhood to explore is small motor coordination. This indicator is specifically assessing a student's ability to manipulate tools like scissors. This supports the ability to develop those small hand muscles, which eventually will be used to help them become strong riders. Interesting to note that our scores in the fall of 2020 are greater than the scores in the fall of 2019. Although we do not have specific evidence to support this assumption, we believe that the learning materials that have been sent home to all preschool families has contributed to our growth. Items that the teachers from our summer planning group strongly requested were Play-Doh and Unifix cubes or counters. These materials were sent home in the first quarter to-go bags, and Play-Doh was again sent home this quarter. We have observed teachers using these items and students' active engagement in the learning process because they had something physically to manipulate. The use of these concrete materials are not only developing a student's ability to persist with a task that may seem challenging, but they also provide experiences that are typically offered in a classroom setting, offering some consistency whether learning happens at home or in the school building. Next slide, please. Our final data slide tonight represents skills in the area of number sense. This is the ability for a student to count, demonstrate one-to-one correspondence, recognize written numbers, and eventually recognize the number of items in a small group without pointing to or counting to them, otherwise known as subitizing. Our data in this area shows some consistency from fall of 2019 to fall of 2020. More students scored in the 1 to 2 range in fall of 2019, and fewer students scored in the mid-range of 3 during the fall of 2020. One success to note for fall of 2020, more students were able to receive a numeric score during this assessment period. Again, intentional professional development for staff to support their understanding of the items being assessed has been a contributing factor. And no evidence of this assumption, we believe that the distance learning has provided teachers time to collaborate with their peers and to focus on content differently than they may have during in-person learning. Supporting a student's ability to count and demonstrate one-to-one correspondence when they have concrete materials that have been provided to all students is our thought, is in our thought, a representation of the success of our to-go learning materials. Next slide, please. As you can see, we've spent a lot of time reflecting on where we were to make sure that our path forward for student growth is clear. We continue to reflect on our current practices and the data collected so that we can pivot when necessary for the betterment of our staff, students, and families. Starting next week, we have professional development planned that will support teachers in their work with our ELL students. Additional trainings are also coming from our partnership with Teaching Strategies Creative Curriculum to support the work of teachers with our students and families. Curriculum Council is working to gather and share best practices in diversity and inclusion. Glenn Calhoun and Kimberly Trailerlow, our lead teachers, are supporting and coaching staff virtually based on action plans created, and of course, as needs or other questions arise. The data from the ELA is helping us stay laser-focused on improving student outcomes. Academically, we have a solid plan to ensure that all CPS preschool students are successful in any learning environment and ready for kindergarten. Next, Heidi Cummings, Early Childhood School Social Worker, will share information about the work being done to support students' social and emotional learning.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to join you this evening and provide some insight on the role of the school social worker and social emotional learning in early childhood education. According to our district goal, we have, next slide, please, I'm sorry. I want to go over briefly our strategic plan and how the Ohio Department of Education and Cincinnati Public Schools' strategic outcomes align. According to the Ohio Department of Education, they have recognized SEL as an integral part of our student development through the year 2024. I wanted to reflect how ODE aligns with CPS. Well, so according to our district goal of health and safety, we have continued to focus on personal wellbeing. We commit to putting the safety in physical, social, and emotional health of staff and partners in everything that we do. We have played, with Measure C, we have increased the number of school social workers from 0 in 2018, 19, to 1 in 2019, 20 school year, and continued as well into the 2021 school year, and increased the amount of time that social workers devote to supporting the social and emotional. We've improved social and emotional learning methodology by increasing the number of
We're having a little trouble with connections. Can you all hear Heidi?
No, she actually faded away.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and go to next slide, please. So as Heidi is, who is our wonderful social worker within the ECE department, our emotional awareness score on the ELA has increased significantly over the past year, from fall 19 to fall 2020. The pictures are depicting her, she is implementing the PaaS program under, with Carrie Bunger and her department, so there's a cross-collaboration there. When we are in session, she is providing that program to all of preschools in person, but then she has also discovered a way to do it remotely, that she joins classrooms with, through Google meets, so they continue to get their lessons with, I forgot the turtle and duck's name, but they are special puppets that go along with each lesson. Next slide, please. So we were able to, in 1920, we had 22% of our, our classroom, or 29 classrooms that received this program provided through either a school social worker or a psychologist. This year, we have increased that number to expand to 15 classrooms, and we look forward to expanding it more. Next slide, please. So next, I would like to introduce the infamous Lead Secretary of ours, Raw Ward, to talk about family and community engagement. Raw?
Good evening. Next slide, please. Thank you so much for allowing us to share highlights of our wonderful early childhood preschool program with you. We want to acknowledge our wonderful community partners and families that contribute to our progress. Our partners help us address multiple areas of learning, including language, literacy, math and science, physical health and nutrition, family needs, and so much more. At home, our families are actively engaging with their student and practicing all the skills they've learned throughout the day. Again, we thank you for all you do. And now back to Vera.
Next slide, please. Transition to kindergarten. Next slide, please. So as you can see with all of our sites, we are four or five-star ratings, and due to the hard work of all of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our student service assistants, our principals, our assistant principals, lunchroom managers, just everyone within the schoolhouse, that contributes to these high ratings from the state of Ohio. Due to those high ratings, we are very fortunate that we have been collaborating with other departments in Cincinnati Public Schools, along with our partnership with Cincinnati Preschool Promise for kindergarten transition. Next slide, please. So some of the areas that we have looked at through our collaboration is we are looking at how can we remove those barriers to ensure that our families are having a smooth transition from a preschool setting, whether it's with CPS or a private provider, into one of our awesome neighborhood or magnet programs with kindergarten programs within Cincinnati Public Schools. It has been a total collaboration with ITM. They have helped us develop ways to make enrollment easier online, along with, within our department, our assistant school community coordinators that assist families through the process, our enrollment hub staff that I cannot praise high enough, where they help schedule the immunizations with health departments to ensure everything is completed prior to going into kindergarten. Also, our partnership with Cincinnati Preschool Promise, as we are looking for ways, and it's going to be a little different this year since we are remote, to look at how we can register those families in a safe way through the pandemic. We are looking at, though, going into, from this year to next year, in Cincinnati Public Schools, we have 959 four-year-olds that will be rolling up into our Cincinnati Public Schools kindergarten classrooms, and we are very excited about that. Next slide, please. And all of this is to show that together we can grow. We have had to pivot many, many times, but through it all, we're coming But through it all, we're coming out with a lot of positives through a very challenging time. I wish to thank all of our partners, all of our CPS departments, Deputy Amont, Superintendent Mitchell, and especially you, I know the board does kudos. I would like to do kudos to the board, the superintendent, and the deputy, and the PLT for always supporting us and being dedicated to our youngest learners throughout our city. So thank you and thank you for your attention this evening. Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you so much to the preschool staff for your presentation, and we'll open it up for questions and comments from board members. Okay, Ms. Bowers?
Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I still call you Ms. Brooks. Thank you, Vera.
You're welcome.
And your team for the wonderful presentation. I just needed clarity for Maggie. I think Maggie presented on reasons for withdrawal. And she identified that there were 85, and I might have written this down wrong, 85 registered students for magnet schools for next year? Is that what I heard her say?
There are actually 82 students or 82 families that due to COVID-19 opted not to be enrolled in our preschool magnet program this year, but their seats are reserved for next school year. So if they're a P4, there'll be a P4, their seat for kindergarten was reserved.
Kindergarten, so they will be in that 959? Some of them, if they were P4, some of them.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a number for how many are in our neighborhood preschools? Do we have any information about that right now? That may have opted out but are planning to come back next year?
That, we could not find an effective way to track that. What we do know is we had 165 families due to the list of reasons on the PowerPoint. And I can send that to you all. We know that there were 23 families that were unable to manage distance learning. There were 34 that moved out of the state or country. We did have 35 families, this is probably answering the questions you're asking, Ms. Bowers. 35 families requested to withdraw due to COVID-19. We are hoping that they will rejoin us next year.
Okay, is there any kind of follow-up with them to get that information? From some of the 23 or the 35 or what have the 23 who just couldn't do the remote, maybe a follow, you know, kind of close that conversation?
Yes, Maggie and her team, which are, you know, Cindy Reed and the assistant school community coordinators and the school community coordinators and our hubs, they continually do follow-up calls to check on families even if they are withdrawn. Or what we will do is definitely during this month of February, we will be contacting families to say, what are your intentions for next year? To help them in that process.
Good, very good. And then very good with the early learning assessment. All of that information was excellent. All the data, all the improvement, little change, and I was just really taken back by the, is it phonetical? Did I say that right?
Non-logical.
Thank you, phonological. I was gonna get it together. And then I just have one more question. For the, I'm just so happy about promoting alternative thinking strategies going on in preschool. Very proud, happy about that. So for the emotional awareness, how is that being measured?
The SEL, where you saw the data, that's, that is through the early learning assessment. There is a rubric. So that is measured throughout the year by teachers as they are watching that child's development. So like right now, during the month of January, we'll be doing virtual home visits. So hopefully, when the teacher calls the parent, they'll have a discussion of what they're seeing, and then it's documented as evidence.
Okay, so a self-report also.
It is a self-report, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Messer?
Yes, can you hear me okay? Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that presentation. One question I've had come up several times from families. And then kind of my question goes a little beyond that as we think about preschool promise funding. But as we think about the financial picture and given that we're remote, what is the current policy procedure for what we're charging families? And then do we still get our same amount from preschool promise for those children if we're in a remote environment?
Yes, we do. The only change that you all had decided on and we have been implementing is if you are a tuition-paying family and we are in distance learning, instead, if you were full day and charge, instead of charging the full day, we only charge half day.
Okay, and then that would change if we go back.
If we go back to in-person, then yes, we would go back to what the tuition originally was.
Okay, good. I just wanted to confirm that here in the new year. Another thing, you know, you talked a little bit about this, is that transition to preschool. I think this is obviously such an important part of building our overall district enrollment. And there had been conversations with our community providers of preschool that they would engage with us to do some parent connections with our school and help them learn about our schools and what the options are. Because we knew, you know, maybe some of our quote-unquote competitors were in there doing that type of work. Is that something that's still going to be possible here, given kind of the COVID world?
We have been meeting Fran Russ through Communications and Engagement, and I meet bi-weekly with two of preschool promise marketing individuals. And we have actually come up with a plan. We're waiting for the list. They were to send us the list of providers so we can reach out to them and say, you know, can we have a way that we can speak to your families that have four-year-olds going to kindergarten to help them with the process? So yes, that is still in the works, and we are working with preschool promise to on that plan.
Good. And my last is just a comment with a thank you. You know, I have one of your preschoolers in my house, Ms. Lillian, and I will say that I was very pessimistic as it relates to how in the world are you going to do preschool for, a virtual for preschool? It just absolutely made no sense to me. And I will tell you, you have figured it out, that kit that you talked about that came with those little glass beads and the different tools. We had no idea what this is gonna, but it all worked. And it wasn't just our teachers, it was our paras. And talk about making a silk purse out of a sow's ear. You guys really stepped up on this one. And I've seen the fruits of your labor in my own house here and hear the same thing from other parents. So thank you for what you've done to keep what we all know is an important part of a child's development, having preschool accessible to them. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I'm very, very proud of my leadership team and just very, very proud of anybody that's working with early childhood this year. They really have made a difference.
Good leadership. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, just two comments. Thank you for the slide and the part of the presentation that once again pointed out the alignment between our strategic plan and our efforts at CPS and also the state ODE strategic plan. We need to do more and more of that, but I will also say part of that alignment is because CPS was so involved with the development of the Ohio Strategic Plan, in part because we were, we were in part a model. And we're getting the right notes, whether it was preschool or whether it was community learning centers or emphasis on health and safety. So appreciating community partnerships. And the other thing that I love it, the chart that shows all the four and the five stars. I think that should be a billboard somewhere with some sort of explanation. I mean, that is absolutely impressive. I mean, put it on High 75. I don't, stars everywhere in positive upbeat colors. That's, that's just, boy, that's something. That's something. So thank you, and I appreciate, I appreciated the depth of the presentation today. Thinking in terms of really seeing some great measurement and validation for what the community voted on and what CPS has been doing for 50 years.
Thank you.
Yes. And I'd also like to close out by saying that I agree with Ms. Bolton about that visual. And just listening as you were talking about, and Ms. Bowers is asking about how we bring our families back. You know, if nothing else, it's gonna draw attention, and people are gonna say, what are all those stars up there? And so I think it really is an excellent marketing tool. And I also concur with Mr. Messer as the grandparent of a preschooler who will be entering kindergarten next year, that the virtual experience, she comes every day. I mean, there's no fight or anything about it. She loves it. She is ready to come back to school. She misses her friends. And I'm just gonna get, I'm gonna pre-warn you that she has a little brother who will come into preschool next year. And he is a whole lot different than she is, so.
Well, I'm very confident in our teachers. Don't handle it.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Very, very comprehensive. Great. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. So if we're ready to move on, Superintendent, the next presentation, please.
Yes, so tonight, I'm going to present some information for the board and the public, giving you an update as to where we are, kind of the state of CPS. And then we'll go into the community data and then come back and close it out in terms of next steps. So next slide, please. So you've already seen this information tonight. The last presentation identified our five goal areas that are aligned in the strategic plan. And so I'm going to focus our conversation tonight on student-centered decision-making as well as health and safety, in addition to growth and actually community engagement. Next slide. So pre-pandemic, we didn't know how good we had it. So I want to remind everybody, we, our enrollment was increasing by about a school a year. This did not happen by accident. We were opening new schools. We were voted by our employees, one of the top workplaces in the state of Ohio by Forbes Magazine. And I did not complete the survey, so that didn't come from me. And I know that people don't like to hear this, but we are and have been the highest performing district, urban district in the state of Ohio. Now, do we want to be the highest performing district in comparison to all the districts? Absolutely. However, this is a fact that we need to be proud of and be aware of. So this is all what was happening in our district pre-pandemic, and there are so many other great things that were happening as well. Next slide, please. And then the pandemic hit and pandemic, it was a worldwide situation that we're still in, and things had to change as a result of COVID-19. Although things changed, we have never left our commitment to educating our kids. And you can see that that commitment starts with preschool in our previous presentation. Next slide. So we knew that we need to come up with a plan to be able to execute very well to address this new situation that we're in, so we pivoted. And that pivoted included, next slide, two strategic teams that were designed for execution. So not for a plan to sit on a shelf, but execution in terms of looking at our academics and then looking at operations as it relates to health and safety. Next slide. So here's what you and the district team accomplished. When I say you, I'm talking about the board, our parents, our community members, our families, our partners. You did this work, and the district team assisted. It's important for me to call out all of our staff members who are very, very instrumental in this work, and we could not have done this work without our board, without our community, without our partners, and with all of our staff members rowing in the same direction. Next slide. So it may have sounded like a very easy feat to come up with this new learning plan that would include distance learning, which is something that was very new to us, other than our virtual and digital academy. But we came up with a new learning plan. Next slide. And that learning plan included distance learning. It also included blended. And then you can see all the things that it included. These are a part of the accomplishments, to think about the fact that we rolled out 30-something thousand devices, that we offer free Wi-Fi for any kid who needs it, that we started CPS TV, which did not exist prior to this, that we worked with partners to get packets out to kids where there was GE Aviation who copied them or Staples who offered to print them if you came into the locations. Then we had staff members putting together those packets and at churches, being able to pass them out, getting the technology ready. And so it was just an all-out effort from our entire community to get this work done. Next slide. And as we did this tremendous work of moving to distance learning, and yes, this is a time to celebrate. We have to celebrate the things that we have done well, because that will give us the energy to move forward. Not only did we do all of those things, but we also helped, you helped to get kids into college. We continued, you continued the career-based learning experiences for our young people. Our young people still engage in internships, and they're actually in internships right now today. And many, many, many of our young people still were able to achieve career credentials. So these sound like very easy things, but they were very difficult, especially during this time. But we are still committed to educating our kids as our number one mission. Next slide. And then there are the extracurricular activities, athletic sports and the arts. It was really important for the community, for the parents, for our kids, that we maintain these services for our young people. And you have been able to do that work with us. Next slide. And to think about the fact that during a worldwide pandemic, we opened two new schools, Mozart and Lighthouse, and expanded grade levels at Leap, Cairns, Spencer, Carthage, and Gamble Elementary. So I am just amazed by what powerful things can be done by a collective group of people who are determined to put teaching and learning first. Next slide. Then there's the health and safety of our district and our community, not just our district, but our community. And we, we, along with you, put together a district plan with the CDC guidelines and the board's principles, precautionary measures, the SEL, the nursing support. Board members said we want a registered nurse in every single one of our schools. And the community, the health department, you all helped to make that happen. Medical provisions are still being provided while we're in distance learning, and literally millions of meals have been passed out to our families. And we have done all of this with extremely little spread within our schools. Next slide. And to top it all off, our community, our generous, supportive community renewed a $48 million levy in the midst of a pandemic. And I think that that really says not only something about our community, but it also says something about our board, that our community believes in the leadership of our board, and they believe that we are doing the right thing to support our young people. And that $48 million levy renewal supports pre-K as well as K through 12th grade and balanced the budget. So this is quite honestly a time of celebration. We have to celebrate the things that we have done well and pat people on the back again, because that encourages them to continue to go. The next slide. The coordination of resources, that was extremely important, and it has been extremely important through this pandemic. We've taken on donations and volunteers and providing services so that our students have care during the school day and providing many, many essential needs for our families. Testing for our students and testing for our staff members. And we want to be among the first, if not the first, to be able to offer a vaccine within our district. Next slide. Now, in order to promote all this, we needed the communications to be able to support this. And so we've launched videos and campaigns, and we had our very own TV special, an orientation for parents. Again, these might sound like little things, but it takes about 20 big things to make each one of these things happen. And so again, I want to salute you and everyone who was a part of this very important work. We've done opinion pieces and town halls for parents, for staff, for kids, and weekly messages. And again, we're so grateful for all the people who have come together to make this happen. Next slide. So we want to be able to continue to mobilize a coalition of partners who are working beside us, an army of people, if you will, to. an army of people, if you will, to help us do this very important work for our kids and for our community. Next slide. The why. Why do we do all of that stuff? Why did we put all the services in place and the packets of information and the online learning and the videos? The reason we did all of this, next slide, is because in a time like this, we are called to serve. That is our job, to serve. Next slide. And our ultimate why are our students. So earlier, you heard Vera Brooks talk about preschool and her wonderful staff. At the end of the day, pre-K through 12th grade is about what happens to you once you get over the finish line and how prepared you are for a career after graduation. That's why we are doing all, that's why you are doing all that you do in support of our young people. Next slide. Our why is about restoring hope. And we are an institution for learning, and our restoring hope comes in the form of making sure that every single one of our, our graduates, that they are career-ready, ready to go into the military, the world of work, and make a decent living, or go off to college. Next slide. Decisions, decisions, decisions. We make a lot of decisions. And sometimes we don't know right away whether or not the decision we made was the right decision. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time to know whether we've made the right decision. Next slide. But we know that the right decision is informed by data. And so you heard Vera Brooks and her team talk about how they use data. We use data. Our curriculum team, they use data. I heard about all the ways they use data, not just to collect it, but to analyze it and to inform their work. And now we're going to talk about the health data of our community and how we can use that data to inform our work moving forward. So I'd like to turn the presentation over to Sarah Trimble-Oliver.
Good afternoon. So as the Superintendent has just read us, we have been on this crazy COVID journey. It's been about ten months now. And it certainly is an understatement to say that in order for us to keep focused on our health and safety goal, our strategies have had to continue to change due to this evolving COVID pandemic. So what we are going to do right now is look at some of the same CPS and community COVID data that we have been looking at for months. Next slide, please, Rob. Using the recommendations of our health professionals, we're going to first look at the number of cases in schools and in-school transmissions of COVID. Go ahead, Rob. Next slide. In Hamilton County, there were twenty new student COVID cases in public schools and twelve new staff COVID cases in public schools. And that was for the week prior to December 24th. On the next slide, you'll see the CPS data. We now have 238 confirmed student cases out of 35,000 students and 399 staff cases out of about 6,000 staff. We still are at six detected in-school transmissions, so a very low rate. On the next slide, you'll see the graph that we're all used to by now. This is the city daily new cases. You will see that beginning in early December, we began decreasing in the number of daily cases in the city, reaching a low in the seven-day average on actually December 28th. But in the past several days, we have begun increasing again. Our health advisors indicate that some cause of this dip could be that fewer people were choosing to go get tested for COVID right around the holidays, as they were either traveling or spending time with family. Now, if we zoom in on the last fourteen days of this chart on the next slide, we look at our fourteen-day history, you will see that the first six dots were green, meaning they were decreasing. And then the last eight dots are all red, increasing over the past eight days. Now, this most recent seven-day average puts us at fifty-seven daily new cases per 100,000. And you'll remember from the last presentation, we were at seventy daily new cases per 100,000. So we are down from that, from prior to the break. Based on our experience during blended learning, the level of forty daily new cases per 100,000 is where we were experiencing challenges with staffing levels that we needed to maintain the safety protocols in the schools. So the summary here tonight is that we are at a lower community level than before the break, but we are not yet at the forty cases per 100,000. On the next slide, you will see the positivity rate, which our health professionals recommend using this as a secondary measure. This has increased again to 11.9% for the city. And on the next slide, the average length to get positive test results remains at the acceptable level of under two days. Next slide, please. So we know that there has been very little in-school transmission, and we know that the community spread has led to difficulties in maintaining adequate staff in our schools. So over the next couple of weeks, and I believe we are publicly reviewing this data again on January 16th, we will continue to closely watch the daily city new cases per 100,000 and other new developments that could impact our return to blended learning. So for example, our backup staffing plan, as we consider a phased-in return to blended learning with pre-K to third grade and specialized classrooms as a priority to return first, we are ramping up our backup staffing plan so that when the community spread does lead to staff absences, we are better able to continue with blended learning with more subs and subs for our paraprofessionals. We'll also be prepared to manage individual classrooms or schools that need to go on distance learning if their staffing levels dip too low, as opposed to rather the entire district staying on distance learning. Now, we've also had two recent quarantine changes. Last month, we talked about the change from the CDC and the Ohio Health Department about adult quarantines, which is allowing a 10-day quarantine to close contacts rather than a 14-day quarantine. And this will help get staff back to work more quickly. I will also mention that, and Mr. Lindy alluded to this earlier. Last week, Governor Dewine announced a change to the quarantine rules specifically for Ohio students. And this is based on a study that was done with nine Ohio districts. And the change states that students in a classroom that are less than six feet distancing would not be required to quarantine if there's a positive case in their classroom, if they were wearing masks properly. Now, this is a preliminary study that has been released. At this time, because we're returning to blended learning with six-foot distancing, this would not immediately affect CPS procedures. But we will be looking for the full research study report, which is coming out later in January. And we'll be looking for further written guidance from the Ohio Health Department. And we'll be discussing this study with our health advisory group about future implications for CPS procedures. And then lastly, a vaccine update. Susan Bunty and Paul McDowell have been working with the Cincinnati Health Department for how our staff will be able to get the vaccine. So it is expected that the vaccine will be delivered to the Health Department within three weeks, although that's not guaranteed. So plans are underway as we speak for the logistics of that, such as identifying which school locations we could use, the dates, and how staff can sign up for an appointment. It is possible that we would receive the vaccine in phases, different quantities in different phases. And if that is the case, our team is working on a phased-in list by staff group. We know that many people are hearing about the vaccine in the news and wondering, what does that mean for CPS staff? However, there's still a lot unknown about the exact timing. And so we'll be able to communicate more details about that as the plan progresses with the Health Department. And just a quick note, there is no vaccine currently for individuals under the age of 16. So all of our safety precautions should remain in place when we do return to blended learning. And now the Superintendent will conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Sarah. One quick note I'd like to make about the vaccine. It's my understanding that in order for districts to be able to have the vaccine for their school-based people, they must be in some form of in-person learning. So just want to make that clarification. Next slide, please. So whether it comes to academics or our safety protocols, from what you've heard this evening, of course, in no way, shape, or form do we think we are perfect. But we do believe and know that we are doing the very best that we can and constantly looking to improve because we know our students are worthy of our very best. Next slide. We also have not left our commitment to educating our young people, graduating them, and getting them to a place, a successful place beyond CPS. We know that it is critically important for our young people to be back in school. And I'll say that again. We know it's critically important for them to be back in school. And it's also important for us to be able to make sure that we can keep them safe and all the adults who work with them. Next slide. We are all in this together, and I have no doubt that if we work together, as we have done, as you have done so wonderfully over these last several months, almost a year now, that we can get our kids back into school and get them back safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, for the presentation, and we will now hear questions and comments from board members. Ms. Bowers first, followed by Mr. Lindy.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Sarah, for, for all of that information. It was a lot. But I wanted to touch base on, Sarah, your comment regarding the governor's comments regarding the study that was done and what I would think were mostly some of the suburban schools surrounding us. But he also made a comment about quarantining for children who were exposed, that did not need to quarantine. Do you all, do you all remember any comments about that? Students who were, may have been, children, I should say, who may have been exposed, do not need to quarantine? And if you have any comments about that?
Yes, that's correct. And they, that team that did the study issued a preliminary report a few days ago. And that is what the governor has released, is that the students who were less than six feet apart from a positive case would no longer need to quarantine. The full study report being released later this month. We haven't received any specifics from the Ohio Department of Health yet, but we're expecting to receive that soon.
And we did, Ms. Bowers, we did talk with our health advisory team about the, the governor's recommendation or suggestion last week. And so they promised to get more information and come to, back to us with that. They feel like they need a lot more clarification from the governor's office about that information.
There was a coworker mine today whose children attend sycamore schools, who made a comment that the CPS had got that information, so therefore they had reversed that. So therefore they were moving forward, whatever that recommendation was or suggestion was from the governor.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
You broke up? Well, you broke up, and I think you were making a point that, that I think folks want to hear. So.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I had a coworker whose child, children go to sycamore schools and made the comment today that, I probably have some feedback on this, but based on the governor's suggestion or recommendation that children who may have been in contact with someone who had COVID did not need to quarantine, she assumed that we were moving in that direction. I told her we had not had that discussion with our district yet. I said, I did hear him say that, but they are moving forward based on that is true. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that was thrown out there, because some school districts are taking it and assuming that we should also. But thank you for clarity, Sarah and Superintendent, on us looking, waiting for the full report.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I appreciate that. I had two things. One was on the topic that Member Bowers raised. And I, it's a little, it's a little bit different. I just wanted to make sure I fully understood the point that Ms. Trimble-Oliver had shared. So if they're saying that there's a positive, I, I recognize that we want to get the act report and read it. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm interpreting the, the, the paraphrase you shared accurately. So they're saying that if a student, can you just say exactly what you said one more time?
Yeah, sure. So the, the statement from the governor is saying that if students are in close contact with a positive COVID case, meaning less than six feet, they would no longer need to quarantine if they were properly wearing a mask.
Yep. And, and can you help me understand what that means for whether or not? It seems to me like the key question is, do we have good evidence that it is safe to have kids back at three feet instead of six feet? Because if we have evidence that we could do that, we could bring the kids back five days. And that, that feels like a really big deal. And so I was trying to make sure I understood the connection between that and then what the governor had said.
Yes. So the, the preliminary report from the study is stating that the positive, the, the transmission of being six feet apart versus not being six feet apart is not different. Right. There was no difference. However, our health advisors had some very specific questions about how those conclusions were drawn from this study.
Can, will we, will we be able to like, Dr. Con or Dr. Amin or whoever is kind of working on this, will, will we be able to have them up to speed on all of that by the 16th?
The full report is not due to be released until the end of January, so I'm not sure about the answer to that.
Okay. Okay. I just, where, where all this is coming from is if, if there's information out there that says it would be safe to have all of our kids back in school, I would love to do that. Speaking for anybody other than me, but just, just speaking for myself.
I believe they would say it's a little too early right now, based on what we've got so far.
I appreciate that. And the second question I had was just in, in looking to the 16th, I wanted to check that we'll be able to look at a nice set of comparisons for what other districts and other private schools and other Catholic schools or charter schools are doing in our, in our region when we talk about this on the 16th.
Yes, we will have that for the 16th.
That's great. I want to say, thank you in advance. Appreciate it.
Mr. Lindy, that was, that has already been noted, and you'll see that on, that topic on the agenda, on the draft agenda when you get that over the next several days. Just wanted to make sure you know we, yeah, we, we did get that information. I'm just saying, we got your request. Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Wonderful. Mr. Messer?
Yeah. I just, you know, I know we all take our roles very seriously as an employer, as much as an educator or education organization. Is there expected to be a policy where we'll require a vaccine for our employees to come back to school when that's available? I know today the governor said, for example, nursing homes, there would be not a mandate, but the nursing homes themselves could require. What will be the policy there for the district?
So I can't speak to policy, but I would like to give a little piece of information to this conversation. So earlier this week, I was on a call with the Health Commissioner for the county, for the city, the mayor, and representatives from the chamber and Portman's office. And I'm trying to think who else was on the call. But anyway, that topic came up because I brought it up. I asked, is there anything that's coming out of the state regarding the, you know, requiring? Or are any companies or organizations making a condition of employment getting the vaccine? And no one on the call was aware of that, that anyone was making that a condition of employment. The mayor did then ask the chamber to look into it and to survey companies in this area and organizations. The mayor did then ask the chamber to look into it and to survey companies in this area and organizations. I checked with the hospitals, and they are not requiring it and making it a condition of employment. Having said that, it is my understanding that only about 30% of the nursing home facility workers have agreed to take the vaccine.
Interesting. Well, thank you for that. And then just the others, a comment. I love the way you opened up because I think we all need the kick in the pants once in a while because you get so mired in the mess of, you know, just how difficult the pandemic has been. You forget to see the bigger picture, and I appreciate you rooting us in that as we kick off the year because there are some very, very, very celebratory things there on that list that we should all be very proud of. So thank you for that.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, on the employment thing, I know we need to have our experts and our legal people talk to us. But something I heard in a discussion in that you can't make it a term, the vaccination a term, you may not be able to make it a term of employment, but you can make it a requirement or stipulation for assignment. Meaning you couldn't terminate someone, but you could determine how they are assigned, that they maintain their position. But that's just something that, again, what experts were listening to, we'd have to listen to our own. But that starts to make some sense, I guess. And then the issue was in industry, you know, assignment is different. They even use schools as an example that that might work in schools, but it wouldn't work necessarily in the factory or in some of the other things. I appreciated this presentation too. And I've only heard one mistake. And it's very rare that the superintendent makes a mistake ever. But we have to start saying or keep saying PK16. Because our children are getting hours toward that and employment toward that. So that always is a provocative comment anyway, and people have to think about it. But it really are CPS more than most is really a PK16 school district. A wonderful presentation. Thank you. And I'm with Mr. Messer. It's great to get the kick in the pants and see the light at the end of the tunnel and rest on your laurels and figure out any other kind of trite things I can say. But I've got to, that was good. I appreciated that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? The superintendent gets the Miss Positivity Award tonight for helping us get, I mean, we have to be in that fight. I mean, I appreciated that, and I think it's a good way to start the year coming in, recognizing that on January 16th, we're still going to have lots of questions. But we're ready to sort of grab a hold of this thing. We, and I agree with you in terms of where we want our kids to be. So, yeah, thought it was a good presentation. All righty. So if there are no further questions or comments, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here are the specific instructions for participation. Members of the public who wish to speak during the board meeting must make the request through the chat feature, including your name, your full name, affiliation with the district, school community, and contact information for response to questions. This request models standard practice if we were meeting in person in the ed center. We have Mr. Hoying. I believe you're gonna, are you gonna be inviting people in? Okay? And we have Jeremy Gollighew and Rob Wilson, who will be our timekeeper. Hey, once the request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Yes, we are asking you to let us see your face as you're talking with us. So thank you for that. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and they only speak once. When the timer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items, and we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. All righty. If we're ready, Mr. Hoying?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Our first speaker this evening is Youssef Manir, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Mr. Manir.
Hello, my name is Youssef Manir, and I am a senior at Walnut Hills High School. You all know who I am. You've all seen me. First thing I want to do is I want to thank Mr. Morosky, Ms. Bowers, and Board President Jones for meeting with us. And I want to thank Board Member Lindy for working to schedule a meeting with us. I know we had to reschedule today because of some miscommunication, but I wanted to thank all of you. In terms of who we're still waiting on a response for, Ms. Bolton and Mr. Messer, we still have not received a response to either of our emails to you guys. So waiting on you. Now, today, I want to say Happy New Year. And also I want to talk again about the disproportionate punishment and referral to the police of given to black students by Cincinnati Public Schools. Black students make up 63% of the total student population, but they account for 83% of all in-school suspensions, 86% of all out-of-school suspensions, 87% of all expulsions, and 85% of all referrals to law enforcement. And this is not an accident, and it has never been an accident. This is the result of policy that has been crafted by Cincinnati Public Schools and will continue to criminalize black and brown students for as long as you allow these policies and the police to remain in our schools. It is your responsibility to stop this. You can't just keep watching the same trend and say, oh, it was worse five years ago or 10 years ago, or the SROs make it better than when it was just the B cops, because that's not a solution to the problem. You're putting a bandage on a stab wound and expecting the bleeding to stop. You owe it to your students, to your black and brown students that are being criminalized, to stop this, to make their schools safe, and to actually make their schools anti-racist. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manir.
Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Ozzy Davis. Go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono, junior at Walnut Hills High School. And I'm also here to talk about removing police officers and student resource officers from our schools like Youssef. So going off of what Youssef was just saying, it's important, we realize that people, that this is something that's difficult and that people may say that they want a better relationship with the cops because it is going to be difficult to take police officers out of school. And it's something that would be a process. But it's important to realize that the police officers are not protecting black and brown students and are endangering them. And that even if they have a good relationship with students at the schools, their number one job is still to be police, and it's still to criminalize the students and punish them in ways that doesn't allow them to learn. Another reason that people support having police in schools is because they might protect, is the idea that they would protect students. But in reality, police officers do not respond to violence in schools by preventing it, but respond after the fact. And those violences that people are mostly scared of, like gun violence, is something that's very rare, while the criminalization punishment of black and brown students by the police happens every single day and is something that we cannot ignore. Again, we are asking you to remove cops from the schools and implement transformative and restorative justice so that our students in their environment where they can learn and are able to grow as people rather than be criminalized for doing things.
Okay, I'm not sure what happened. We lost contact with Ms. DeBono.
Okay. Yeah, I think we'll go to our next speaker, Ozzy Davis. Mr. Davis is followed by Kerry King. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Thanks, Dan. Happy New Year. I love you all. I love each and every one of you, and I thank you for your continuous service. It's been a very challenging time, and you all have really held this district down. I appreciate you. Now, I wanted to report back to you because I said to you guys last month that as a member of the sports media, I get an opportunity to really see firsthand how protocols are working in our gyms. And, you know, at this point, I've been to over 50 games in a month. And I've been to Withrow, Hughes, West High, Taff, Gamble, and Woodward. So I wanted to report to you all that your ADs are doing a fantastic job. Like, they make Ozzy walk through the front door at Woodward with his walker instead of letting me come through the back door like I've been doing for decades. But like I said, I appreciate it because I know that they're taking every effort. And I can go through each AD, from Andrew at Hughes all the way to Romell at Taff. I know them personally. I know them professionally. And I'm really just kind of reporting to the school board that your ADs, I don't know about girls' basketball and other sports or activities. I'm sorry, I also have been to Walnut Hills as well. I just wanted you all to know how hard they're working to ensure safety.
We can't hear you. We can't, we can't hear you, Mr. Davis. No. I, okay. Sorry. I'm not sure if that's on our end or their end. But we apologize for any technical difficulties. I mean, we can't hear you at all.
Yeah. It doesn't appear to be on our end. He's not muted. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I can hear you now. I don't know what happened. I'm sorry. All right. Go ahead, Dan. I'm cool.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Davis. Our next speaker is Kerry King, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. King.
Hi, good evening. Dr. King from the YMCA here. Wanted to just thank everybody for your time. Thank you for everything that you guys are doing. Huge shout out to the IT department and Jeremy. You guys have solved a lot of our issues. I am the director of extended day programs at YMCA. So when we are in session in the buildings, I have programs at Rising Stars Vine, Peter Montessori, Gamble Montessori, Hoover Creative Performing Arts. And I oversee the programming at the Carl Linder Y in the West End. We've got a lot of programs. Right now, we've got programming at Carl Linder, and we've got kids from Rockdale, Hayes Porter, Parker Woods, SCPA Leap, and Fairview, to name a few. We've got kids from all over the district, and it's really great. It's awesome to have all these kiddos there. But I wanted just a couple of minutes of your time. We've got coaches we've kind of seen both while we've been in this hybrid model and now in this virtual session. We would love to see some additional collaboration with IEPs, maybe with one-to-one paras, maybe being on site. We've had some great success with some of the therapists coming to our building and meeting with kiddos. We've given them some safe spaces, some clean spaces, so that these kiddos can continue to get that therapy. We are struggling with some of our kiddos that need one-to-one paras and have very extensive IEPs that we're working through with our schools. And the schools have been fantastic. The teachers have been awesome. The administrators have been great. But we really could use some additional support, maybe getting some of those paras out to us, maybe even just for a little bit of time, sit with these kiddos. Because our childcare centers are not equipped for one-to-one work. And so if we could maybe get some of those additional supports during these hybrid times and during this time in which we're in this remote learning, that would be awesome. I would love to sit and maybe collaborate, maybe be on some of those committees. That would be great. So I just wanted to reach out. That is one of the issues that we've got going on right now. Another is, I'm also the LCIMC president at RSA Vine. And one of the things that we are seeing as we're in this schoology, which is fantastic, is that community members can't gain access to the schoology. So one of the things that Monica Battle and I have been trying to do at Rising Stars Vine, for example, is utilizing that platform as the main platform for everything that all the parents use. So the parents go there for everything and gain all information about the school. But we can't access it from the Y perspective. We can't put up information about that kind of stuff. But community members, if we can get access to schoology, that would be great to be that hub. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Thank you guys so much. You guys have been doing a great, great work and yeoman's work. Thank you. Thank you for your support. We hope we're supporting you as well.
Thank you.
You are last. Yep.
Yes.
President Jones, I will have someone reach out to Ms. King's office tomorrow. I am confident that we can do something about working with our students with disabilities. And so, yeah, I'll have someone reach out to her about that. In terms of schoology, there may be some legalities or reasons why we won't open schoology up to anyone just posting stuff on our schoology pages for our schools, but something else we can look at. But we'll definitely follow up tomorrow regarding our students with IEPs. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right. Mr. Hoying?
Yes, our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to let everyone know that public schools should be celebrating. We have a new nominee for the U.S. Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona. And his main goal and focus will be focusing on helping neighborhood public schools. He is a strong public school advocate, which we have not had for many, many years. As public schools have been under attack, I believe that he is really going to come through, not just in words, but also financially to help neighborhood public schools. He believes in strong labor management partnerships. And you know that Cincinnati Public and CFT, we have one of about 50 that are very strong with labor management. Some of you may not realize that the work of building strong collaborative structures such as RILT here in Cincinnati and many of our other structures were developed with the same support group from Rutgers University and Saul Rubenstein. And it was the same work that Mr. Cardona did when he was in Connecticut as a superintendent. So when Superintendent Mitchell says that, you know, we are not just, we are the top urban in the state of Ohio, it's probably because we have this contract that in recent years has been looked down on by the reformers. A quote from AFT President Randy Weingarten stated that there is great potential for a renaissance in public education after years and years of school wars. Cardona's deep respect for educators and their unions will travel with him to DC. And so I really think that we are in a very good position, not only with the contract that we have, but also with the preschool promise. There's going to be additional funding for early childhood that we were counting on four years ago. And now that funding will come through, and we already have the structures in place for that to roll out through our preschool promise partnership. So we should be, all feel really excited for this change in support for public education. The next thing that I've really been worried about, and I hear that parents are worried about, kids are falling behind. But kids are actually gaining so many other extra skills. But I think that if we are moving forward, and we still have six months of planning, that we should really plan for a really strong summer school extended-year experience for our students. In the past, all grades had access to summer school, especially for children who Especially for children who were falling behind, but during the past few years, due to cuts in funding. We were only able to offer summer school to some of the third graders. And some of the high school students who are needing, um, credit recovery and it wasn't really as a way to. Boost them up before school starts like we had done in the past. So I hope that we can really have, um, some strong, um, programming this summer. I know that it does take money, but I'm sure that we will be able to, um, figure that out. Think we need to think about sixth graders and, and possibly extra math as they are entering high school. We need to think about the kids in kindergarten and primary. And then also any of those high school students who will be needing to make sure that they have the credit recovery for their graduations. Um, so I, I look forward to, um, working with the district for developing of that. Type of summer programming. Um, and then I also wanted to say that I have stra- strong concerns about the governor. Um, saying that students exposed to COVID no longer need to quarantine. Students will not have the vaccine. Students are vectors. Many of the students are vectors without any visible symptoms. But anyway, they are still carriers. There are still could be carriers to their family, to their grandparents, to other people in their households. And carriers to each other. So, and do we really even understand the long-term damage that? Some of these students who have had COVID but were asymptomatic, what it's doing internally to them for long-term effects. Just like chicken pox, it lingers in your body forever to the point where when you get older, you have shingles. So we really want to make sure that we're still having those safety measures in place for our students as we move forward. And as for the vaccine, I know there's still a lot of people who may not trust it. But it is, they, they used a lot of research that was already known for development of other vaccines. And I will just say publicly, I will be the first person to stand and get a vaccine in front of everybody because I truly believe. That until 70% of us get the vaccine, we're going to, we will still have this hanging over our heads. But the public needs to make sure that they are stepping up and doing what is necessary. So that we can get our numbers down, so that we can actually safely open our schools. So I hope everyone has a good evening and thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else, Mr. Hoynes?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. So moving on, does anyone have any kudos? No kudos tonight. Okay, Ms., uh, Bates, any retirements?
Yes, I have the retirement. Uh, from our certificated staff, I have Catherine Marie Ernsmeyer, who is a teacher at Sands. Kenneth J. Ash, who was a long-term sub at Walnut. And from our civil service personnel, we have Susan Hopple, who was a paraprofessional. So we wish these retirees our, our, our best, thank them for their service. And wish them well in this new, this new, uh, part of their lives.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. And can you raise that baby up a little bit so we can see that face?
Say hi.
Oh, cute. We even got a smile. Thank you. Thank you. Alrighty, moving on. Uh, we have no board matters items to discuss tonight. So we'll move on to our one resolution. Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution.
Thank you. I certainly will. And, uh, as we introduce it and get it seconded, I'll ask the treasurer to explain. Uh, for the public. Uh, I introduce a resolution, uh, regarding. Resolution for advance pay. Advance payment of taxes and, uh, need, uh, a second.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Treasure Wagner, you're going to help us with that?
Thank you.
Yes, happy to. Good evening, everyone. This is a standard resolution that we do every January, uh, based on calendar year. And all it does is allow the Hamilton County to send us taxes as they receive them instead of waiting until the end of the cycle. But it prevents them from sending us next year's monies. Too early so that they don't cross over the fiscal year. Fit of earning the interest on those taxes, those revenues, because they'll be in our bank accounts.
Okay. Treasure Wagner, is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, sorry about that. All right. Short and sweet. Alrighty. Um, any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton.
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. I have a very short report, uh, to be able to highlight some of our students. So I'm asking to pull up my. Point. Great. Thank you. Next slide, please. So you may have seen the YouTube videos that are promoting masks on Me, our campaign. Well, you are going to see our posters, the work of our kids in our communities. Um, and so look at the, the slogan, Wearing is Caring, very cute. And those masks were actually developed by our kids. And so they are really in. Um, encouraged by this campaign and they're doing wonderful, beautiful artwork to promote it and you'll soon be able to see it throughout our communities. Next slide. And we have a student from Clark High School. We want to highlight her artwork. Um, this beautiful poster, uh, will be hanging recently. It was put up recently and will be there throughout the month of January. Um, so the Cincinnati Reds, they're inviting CPS to share the Mask on Me campaign. At the Hall of Fame Digital Billboard located on Pete Rose Way. So look out for that. It'll be there until the end of this month. Next slide. Now we know that many of our families and community members are really suffering as a result of COVID-19 in terms of. Um, their financial resources have been, um, cut or eliminated. And so we want to do our share in terms of spreading the good information about all the resources that are out there. For our families and community members to be able to connect to. So if you go to our website on our homepage. There are a list of resources that our family members can tap into to be able to help them through this very difficult time. Next slide, please. So earlier I talked about how we deploy 30-something thousand devices. Well, guess what? Sometimes they break. And our technology team, Jeremy, as the leader, not only do we have a hotline to be able to troubleshoot issues that parents may have and you can call in. We now will provide a new device for you. And so we are going to be, um, starting off at 18 different sites throughout the district. If we cannot fix your problem. Um, through a phone call or, um, through the internet, then we will swap them out for another device. So we are in the. The, um, work of supplying more devices to make sure that our kids stay connected the entire time. Next slide, please. And on Friday, I would like to highlight Dr. Izzy Rutnick. You know, he's so innovative in terms of. Finding ways to connect our kids globally. We will have students who will be part of a global network conference and a performance and it will be on January the 8th. This coming Friday at 1:00 PM and it will be televised. So more information, um. Regarding this worldwide performance is located on our website. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton. Did we lose her? Ms. Bolton? Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thanks. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Ms. Wagner.
I wanted to point out that, yes, I'm sorry. I wanted to point out that on page four, item C, we are removing from the treasurer's report. Um, the change came late and I was worried that everybody wouldn't get an updated copy. Definitely just scratch that off manually. We'll make a note.
Okay. Alrighty. Um, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates. Ms. Bolton, have you joined us back yet? No. Okay, Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you. Do we have any inquiries or updates? I have one. Does anybody else have any inquiries or updates? Mr. Lindy?
Would you like me to go first, President Jones? I'm happy to go after you.
No, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, um, say something about what's happening in Washington DC, uh, while we're having this meeting. Um, because it feels like something that my kids are going to ask me about when they're old enough to understand these things. Um, and, uh, it feels just like a, a disorienting moment, um, to see, um. A violent insurrection on our nation's Capitol. Um, and, uh, to see a Confederate flag, um, in the United States Capitol Building. Uh, and that this is not normal. Um, and I wanted to say that for two reasons. Um, one, because it's just been. Top of mind for me during this meeting tonight, uh, and I was imagining that it might be for others and if not for others on the board, then for others who are watching. And the second reason was, um, I was trying to think what, what if anything does this have to do with our charge as educators, uh, of, of a major urban school district? Um, and I think she actually has a ton to do, uh, with, with our charge. Um, uh, as a, as a, an educational institution and, um. Finding ways to make sure that this next generation can disagree, um, and talk about, um. Talk about areas of disagreement and distinguish fact from fiction, um, and engage in productive conflict. Um, uh, and peaceful transitions of power and the rule of law. Um, and I think we're, we're, we're raising or we're educating the next generation of civic activists if we do this right. Um, uh, and I think, um, we have a lot of work to do in this country, uh, and I'm grateful to work with you all. Um, and I hope that the next six months are better than the last six months. Um, but there's a, a lot of work to do.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lindy. We appreciate those comments. Um, and I'm sure our public does as well. Thank you. Um. So I just wanted to update the board on where we are in terms of planning around the board work session. Um, I, Mr. Messer and I have talked and Mr. Messer has referred. A lady to us who I've had a couple of conversations with are, and we are amidst. Trying to get ourselves organized around planning for this work session and what her role will be. Um, she is, her name is Yolanda Carter. She is an employee of Johnson and Johnson. Um, and, uh, uh, I, I, I don't have her bio with me tonight, but I will have it on Monday and I'll share a little bit about her on Monday. But, um, my understanding is that she's also done some work with preschool promise and I have heard from. Um, informally that, um, that they were very pleased with her. So we're, we're very, uh, pleased to have her. She is doing this voluntarily. So, um, that's a great thing. So in preparation for the board work session, um. What, what you will get, what, what I've done is provided some basic information to, to her, including sort of a skeleton. Uh, board agenda. And I plan to send that board, I'm going to update it after the dates from today's meeting and then I'm going to. Make sure that all board members get the skeleton draft agenda so that you can respond. And I will provide instructions on there for the kinds of things, you know, you'll have questions about, you know. What do we want to have on this agenda and how do we prioritize? What sort of data and other information and materials that we might need to prepare for this? And, uh, I'm going to ask you to respond to that as quickly as you can and get that back so that we. Gather all the materials and get it out to you in enough time for you to review it. So I plan to get that to you by the end of this week and, um, hopefully we can get it back and get moving. Um, also, just to clarify, I, I suggested that we do this in-house. I just want to make sure that everybody is still on board with that. And are we good with having it in-house? Okay, and, uh, the superintendent is going to make sure that that room is prepared for us. Okay, and then, um, we, so we'll also need to prepare for lunch and, uh. So, um, our staff will be reaching out to you about lunch and we are going to do probably what we did before, which was do something individually, like an individual lunch spot. And our staff will make sure you get, um, um, to put in a request for, for what you want. Okay, so, um. When you get the information, I'm not asking you to format the agenda or anything like that, but add your thoughts about subject matters for discussion. Any, uh, material that you want, any questions that you have. And, uh, we'll take a look at it. We'll make sure it gets out to you in enough time for you to review. So if any questions of me regarding that?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thanks for getting that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Thanks. Okay, any assignments tonight? No assignments? Wow, okay. Alrighty. Okay, so hearing none. I, I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider. Uh, employment of a public employer official and preparations for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Ms., um, Wagner.
Mrs. Bates? Did we lose her again? Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. And, uh, we'll take a, um, five-minute break and then come back. Okay?